And we'll open the meeting and we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Port.
Thank you. Julie?
Miss Burghart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Joe Weeden?
Yes. Motion to approve the agenda passes and we'll move on to communications update. And Mark?
Thank you. Mostly, we've been just communicating with the families and what's going on in terms of this beginning of the school year in the remote settings. So that's been most of what I've been doing and working on the plans for what we're going to do moving forward.
Great. All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to public participation. And just a reminder that public participation is the opportunity for individuals to voice their opinions and is not to be confused with the facts of the meeting. We invite this opportunity for people to speak and we have a few who have submitted this evening. And Bergit, if you'd read those, please.
Yes, we have six submissions this evening, and this is the first one. It's from a man named William Skellinger. Dear Board members, thank you for reading my comment from last week regarding band practice. After the public comment period, there was additional discussion among board members, wondering if my comments represented actual policy. Mr. Kirby suggested that perhaps a random bystander invited me to leave school property. It was the band director who personally told me I had to leave the top of the bleachers and watch the practice from behind the fence. And the band members were made aware of the no spectator policy via Facebook. He was very apologetic and professional about it and was not rude or disrespectful in any way. I understand he's in a difficult position. It turns out that Mr. Steele is properly following actual school policy. As I don't have a Facebook account, I had my daughter look this up for me. Please see Lake Orion High School marching man Facebook entries dated August 26th, August 28th, and September 17th. I will provide copies if necessary. Mr. Steele indicated in one of these posts that he is advised directly by Mr. Holly. I hope this clears up any confusion regarding this topic. At the last meeting, it was suggested that the school was eager to follow MHSAA guidelines for reopening the football season. Need I remind the board that in the MHSAA update number six, written August 14th, football was to be postponed until spring at the earliest. MHSAA made this decision based on feedback and input from the governor's office, state health department officials, member schools, collegiate conferences, and individuals on both sides of the issue. One wonders what happened to all of the input and feedback when the MHSAA reinstated the fall football season three weeks later. See update number seven on September 3rd. How can an organization that recommended against a football season at all now be trusted with writing guidelines for holding a football game safely? It absolutely boggles the mind. The public is tired of this. We are tired of being treated like children. We are tired of ridiculous arbitrary policy that doesn't pass the most basic common sense test. Get our kids back to school, back cheering for their team, and back together with their friends. Lead the way back to normalcy. Thank you, Bill Skellinger. The second one is from Thomas Sarnofsky. He says, please write, I'm sorry, please address the timeline for getting elementary, particularly young elementary students back into the classroom. Virtual learning is failing these kids who are unable to ask questions or interact appropriately with their teachers. In-person learning must be an option as soon as possible as I can see the frustration building in my own second grader every day. It is very off-putting that my child, who loved school prior to this, now dreads attending his Zoom meetings every day. The community needs to see progress from Lake Orion Community Schools. Our younger kids are struggling. The next one is from Mark Riches. Mark says, "Remote learning is not working for us. There needs to be a plan to get kids back into buildings for in-person learning. My fourth grade daughter will either get bored and walk away from the computer or just shut it off and play in her room." Shut off video and play in her room. "The technology issues are extremely frustrating when the audio is so bad that you can't understand what the teacher is saying. The expectations for Wednesday, when there is no virtual classes, turns out to be one to two hours of work followed by playtime. So now my child is only being educated four days per week. As a parent that has to work full-time from home, I cannot act as their full-time educator on these days. Other school districts like Troy are having children return within the next two weeks. Private schools have been in session since the start of the school year. Lake Orion needs to figure out how to provide the education my children deserve in person with accountability before November." The next one is from Chris Reinhardt. He says, "I have reached out several times to understand what the metrics are to reopen the school with no answer. I am hoping very much there is direction on the September 23rd board meeting regarding the metrics required for face-to-face learning. It seems Wednesday's teacher prep day are maybe half-day at the most for elementary and not sure if this really qualifies for one of the 180 days of instruction required by the state." The next one is from Heather Sanawi. S-I-N-A-W-I. I'm not sure I pronounced that properly. Heather says, "My name is Heather Sanawi. Everyone on this board and Mr. Kirby have heard from me numerous times up until now. I continue to fully advocate for in-person learning as the remote setting is not optimal and continues to bring additional stress to both families and students. As a single parent, having my children home in a program two days a week is emotionally and financially straining. For the first time in history, central planners feel that they know what's best for our own good, that we ourselves are incapable of calculating a risk and doing what's best for ourselves and our families. Please give us the respect and courtesy of choosing in-person or virtual learning for all students sooner rather than later. The virus will be with us for some time, and it's imperative we move forward with our lives. My girls' teachers are doing the best they can, and I commend them for that, but this is simply not sustainable. It is not Lake Orion School's job to keep my children safe. It's mine alone as their parent. COVID holds risks. Individuals are fully able to weigh those risks. What started out as help the hospitals and flatten the curve has morphed into an arbitrary and perpetual number of cases that continue to hold our lives hostage in some form. It's not right. Our children need to be in school. There are children who are simply not safe at home despite the incessant insinuation that all of us are. I trust that Ben and the board will make the right decision in the best interest of the children and the families they serve. Please do the right thing. Heather." And this one's from Suzie Brown. And Suzie says, "Hello, I have a middle school and an elementary school student in Lake Orion. What I have found so far during the first few weeks of virtual is this. Middle school has done a fantastic job with Microsoft Teams, and my child has had zero issues, minus some technological issues and maybe a test that the teacher did not receive. Elementary, on the other hand, is very lacking. First, Zoom is still a problem with the district laptops. I had to teach my third grader a five-step process of logging onto Zoom every time. Second, the amount of activities on Seesaw is just plain outrageous. After an eight-hour day of class in Zoom sessions, minus breaks and lunch, my kid is completely drained, and then she freaks out when she sees eight assignments." This can be from both the regular teacher and the specials. "Seesaw is extremely hard for kids of this age, as most, I am sure, can barely type that well, and now their assignments are typed into these weird text boxes that you must try and move around. Or there also is so many assignments in the special classes as well. In middle school, you literally just type the answer. It is backwards how elementary is much harder and a lot more activities and the assignments after they are the ones who cannot barely sit through this whole day of online learning. Elementary needs to return to school. There was a reading assignment in third grade that entailed 30 questions. Most of them seemed overwhelming to this grade. To my knowledge, there was not this kind of reading assessment in second, and this completely had my kid crying, thinking she was going to fail reading. She's been reading all summer and all of shutdown, so she knows reading and she knows how to retell. She literally said, why couldn't I do a Zoom video of me reading? This test was also timed and done in the middle school during a Zoom class. It was stressful, I could see from all. I understand teachers are doing their best, but this seems to be extremely hard for elementary. These are some of the challenges we are facing."
Thank you, Bergit. All right, we will move forward to our next item in governance and strategic area of discussion items, beginning with governance. And Ben?
All right, thank you. We're going to, we'll go through just very briefly the extended COVID-19 learning plan. You all received that in advance, and I do want to recognize that this plan and the return to school plan. Just want to thank you for your patience on when you got that. We, I think that shows that we have been continually working on that and, you know, so it did take a little bit to get it out. And but the extended COVID-19 learning plan that I'm going to start with today, that is the newest compliance document that was put in place by House Bill 5913. It was put into law, Public Act 18. I'm not going to go through this entire document because item number two that we have, we'll talk in more detail about what this compliance document contains. I do want to bring your attention to a few of the pages and then certainly will answer any of the questions if you had some as you went through. But again, recognizing that there'll be more detail in the next agenda item that will probably answer a lot of the questions. But if you look on page three, some of the assurances that we will have for the district is that this will be, this plan will be approved by October 1st, 2020, and then it goes to Oakland, Oakland schools. We also will make this plan available on our transparency reporting link on our website. And also, the third item on page three, and Heidi talked about it last week, was the benchmark assessments that that we have as a district. So those are the items that I wanted to mention on page three. On page five, you'll see that we have the learning plan narrative, and we recognize there that we started out in a remote learning environment. And that's really all I want to bring to your attention on that page. On page six, we recognize that FastBridge is the assessment that we'll be using. It's the same assessment that we've used the past three years as the district benchmark assessment. And we'll continue to do that this year. That is in compliance with this legislation, so we'll make sure that we continue to use that. And lastly, page eight. Draw your attention to page eight. This really is our plan moving forward, which is our next agenda item that I'll address in more detail. But we have it in this particular plan, some of the information, and again, we'll have more detail in the next agenda item. But I think it's important to note that, you know, we've had our categorical special education students in in-person learning. We have, you know, Pine Tree is up and running. So we have a lot of students that currently that they have an individual education plan that are being serviced currently, and that has really gone well. It was nice to see up in Pine Tree when I was there yesterday, kids making the transition, the staff making the transition, and lots of happy faces and people working through our new procedures and protocols. So really looking forward to seeing more students. So what questions do you have about this compliance document? I'm going to take that as none. All right, go ahead, Bergit. Bergit?
Just a disappointing clarification, I suppose, nothing, not a big deal on your end, but this, per the law that you referred to earlier, every 30 days, is my understanding, will be, will be circling back around and reviewing it. So does do you? That will change then because things will change in the next month.
So the district will have to certify their plan every 30 days. And so that could be that we come to you and simply say, the plan that we presented last month is still moving forward. That could be where we've changed X, Y, and Z moving forward, and then you would approve that plan. So either way, we will be acknowledging this, and we've made the commitment, you know, way back anyways, to at each board meeting, address where we're at with the return to school.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nate, did you have a question?
I just had more of a compliment on the opening statement. When I read that one, it was it was a good reminder, as I read it, of what the school district is up against and the way that you all are thinking of it, especially that opening line, you know, it's a global pandemic, we're experiencing a traumatic event, you know, all these decisions and solutions, these are, these are our kids, right? And so it's, it's serious and important, and nobody's asking for this, but I really wanted to compliment the team for crafting the opening, the opening statement for keeping it grounded on what's the nature of the challenge that we're, we're up against. The only thing is, I read it that I thought, you know, maybe, maybe didn't give enough credit to the hard work being done, is the plans that you have all put in place set up for continuity of instruction, even against potential disruption. And we're seeing, you know, a lot of district, a lot of school districts, a lot of businesses where they have to go and start and stop. And I don't know that it necessarily fits in here, but my head went to that, I was, as I was reading that, that a lot of the hard work has that double benefit of setting us up because this pandemic is going to be here for a while, and the opportunity for a start and stop situation is, is probably pretty high in it. So I just want to compliment it and express appreciation for the way that was phrased.
Thank you, Nate. Any other questions or comments regarding this document? Okay, hearing none. Ben, you want to continue, please?
Yeah, and Nate put us in a good segue. I'm going to do a screen share here real quick. All right, can you see me? Okay. See the point? See it? All right. Okay, we did our test run, but just wanted to make sure. Usually that's when things go, go off is when you need it most. So. But Nate mentioned, you know, some of the things that are really important, you know, and none of us asked, you know, to be in these challenging situations, but certainly we are as a society and a community and the schools, a microcosm of our community. And, you know, there have certainly been challenges. We must recognize that. I think all school districts are doing that. There are some really good things that are, you know, transpiring every day. Our staff is working tirelessly. And, you know, things have been getting better every single day with the remote learning, and our staff needs to be commended for that. And we'll talk a little bit about that throughout this presentation. But I would like to appreciate, thank the board, and I appreciate all the questions and the challenges that you guys continue to bring so that we think of different angles and the information that's brought to you from citizens. Appreciate you, you know, being part of that communication loop. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the staff as we've circulated through the buildings, worked with the associations and their leadership. It has been very powerful and certainly community emails, comments, when, you know, when we're out and about, we're hearing all of those things, and it's making an impact for us. And, you know, certainly our labor group leadership teams, they are extremely important. Bottom line is, as far as functioning in a school, you know, we are here to serve children, and the, the staff is, is the key behind all of it. So I'm going to move to the two options that, that we want to provide moving forward. And Nate talked about continuity of learning, and that has been the key in, in all of this. And that's what we're really trying to accomplish, that and, you know, a safe environment, following our protocols and so on. So I'm going to work through and talk a little bit about two different options that we're looking to have moving forward in the, in the future here. Important to note that we're making decisions for, for the students, for the employees that we have, and then certainly our parents and community. Everybody's impacted. We're looking to start our elementary students in, on October 26th in a phase-in manner. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a later slide, what that means. Middle school and high school, we're looking to maintain the date of November 9th, and again, in a phase-in type of a format. Important to note, when we go into an in-person environment, that environment is going to look different than the environment that we all have, you know, come accustomed to and, you know, really enjoy in, in the, the regular classroom environment. Will still be stimulating. It will still be a great experience for your children, but there will be a number of things that we're going to have to do differently. The first piece, we will be requiring students to wear masks. Okay, and that is, that is going to be a K-12 requirement. That is a recommendation. There's a lot of literature out there about the, the transmission of wearing masks, not wearing mask. And when you look at some of the things that are happening across other districts that are in person, the masks are really important, and we're going to continue to move forward with that expectation. On October 26th and 27th is when we're looking to bring back our first set of elementary students. We'll be doing this by alphabet, and that would, that would be, you know, all, all grade levels, and we are doing that at the elementary school, all grade levels. We're doing that intentionally for families. We, you know, we had talked a little bit about different phases. If we do, you know, lower L and then upper L, then that means that it looks different in a household, and this, we believe, gives more consistency to families. That's why we're opting to do it this way. Plus, it will also allow for smaller numbers at each grade level throughout the week to help our staff and our students learn the protocols and the procedures and answer questions and get more of a personalized experience. So you can see the second half of the alphabet there would be in Wednesday, Thursday, October 30th, which is a Friday. All of our students in the elementary will report. The days that our students are not in person on this week, they will be provided independent work. So there still will be five days of instruction. Two of those days will be done independently and prepared for by our teachers. But again, this really allows our, our students and staff to, to work through our protocols and answer questions so that when we do come back with, with all of our in-person students, we will have a higher rate of success, and we believe this is a great way to phase in. As far as the middle school, we're looking at the date of November 2nd, where we will do an orientation for all students that are new to the building. And this will be at each of our middle schools. So that'll be, that'll be a day that will be, you know, great for them, get them around the buildings like we're accustomed to, to help them be successful as they move forward. We then will look at November 9th and 11th. Notice those are not consecutive days. So just make note that is a little different than what we were looking at the elementary. But the first part of the alphabet and the second part of the alphabet will still be attending on the same days, but they are alternate days and not consecutive days. On November 13th, all of our students will be returning in person, that select in person. And then again, we will have the mask requirement at the middle school. At the high school for in-person, again, we're looking at a November 9th. And we have these parsed up as two different teams. So we have a green team and we have a white team. And if you kind of work your way through this, this, this will probably make more sense to students than it does to adults, you know, as we kind of get through this. But the green team would be attending starting November 9th, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of that week. That week of November 9th, our white team would attend Tuesday and Thursday. So you see the following week, November 16th, the green would attend in person on Tuesday and Thursday, and the white team would get three days of in-person, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. This is a version of a hybrid. You, you've heard the term hybrid, and that is something that a lot of different districts are doing at different, in different capacities, different methods. But this is what we are looking at doing. We will determine the return of all students based on the successes that we have with this particular format. Keep in mind, we have, you know, 2,300 students approximately that are enrolled at our high school, and that is a significant amount of students. Because of that, the biggest cause of concern that we have at this time for transmission would likely be a lunchtime. So our district is accustomed to what people have called the Wednesday schedule, which runs 9:40 a.m. to 2:35. And that is the schedule that we will be running November 9th, the week of November 9th, the week of November 16th, as long as we're doing this hybrid. What that would allow us to do is to not have to bring together large groups of students to have lunch. We will be still providing lunch, but that will be a prepared lunch in a, in a bag or a box, and people will have the option of getting that as they leave the building. And again, this is something that people have come accustomed to, knowing it as the Wednesday schedule. Each day from 8:00 to 8:45, we will have student support available, and that will be communicated by the teachers in the school building. But as you can see, that allows for some additional support academically, emotionally, whatever the need is, but our staff will be available to the students at that time. This again will be a rotating schedule, as I had mentioned, hybrid. And again, half of the population. And, and important to note that when somebody isn't in person in this hybrid model, they would be learning asynchronously, which means independently, and they would be getting instruction via, you know, the computer, and that would be, you know, set up with the staff so the students know how to get that and so on. So we're, we're really looking forward to, to this plan. It took a lot of thought, a lot of time, and I really appreciate the work that has been done at each of the school levels. As far as learning options, the in-person would be 9:40 to 2:35, and the students would be in a five-day format. You know, again, the, the number of students that we have there is, is much smaller, so we don't have the concerns for the social distancing and the potential for transmission. So our learning option students will have a five-day schedule, again, 9:40 to 2:35. They will have a lunchtime. And again, it really comes down to the fact that we're going to be able to socially distance and allow them to do that during their school day. The other option that will be available to learning option students are the virtual courses, and they can do these for part of their day or full day, I believe, like they have in the past, and then it'll be a one-term commitment if they decide to take the virtual route. And again, the virtual learning is an asynchronous format, which means they're learning independently, and there would be additional office hours that would be arranged for students if they chose the virtual option. As far as our special education, I did mention that we do have our, of our categorical classrooms in Pine Tree in currently. They do have a sort of, we'll call a hybrid-type model because it's, it's a very unique schedule that people are following. But starting October 26th, we would have all of our categorical classrooms in person, and that would be five days a week. And that would be the same for, for Pine Tree. And so we're really looking forward to getting all of our students back at that point in time. By the end of December, I want to note for our special education students, we will determine any recovery services that are necessary, and that will be communicated with families. Our staff will be made aware of that as our students return to be identifying the types of services that are necessary so that we can accomplish that by the end of December. As far as option two across the district, we'll start with our Dragon Virtual at the elementary level. And it's important to note that this would be an option for kindergarten through fifth grade. We do not believe that the developmental kindergarten, it is a, that is a good option for our developmental kindergarten, so we are not looking to provide virtual for developmental kindergarten. We would still have the in-person option, but cert, and certainly what, what students learn in developmental kindergarten is very, very, very difficult to learn in a remote or virtual setting. So the Dragon Virtual will look very similar to what we are currently experiencing in remote learning. So elementary families will, you know, have a solid understanding of what it is that they're registering for if they do opt for this. We will have a registration week next week that will give us a full week for families to consider. We will be providing lots of information starting tomorrow, if we move forward with this plan, to families. We also will have an information night like we did before, and so the families know completely what it is that they're registering for because we can't have any late registrations for Dragon Virtual. This is something that's going to drive our staffing, and it's just going to be impossible. Once we close registration October 2nd, that is when registration will be completed. And it's also very important to note that if we have students go to Dragon Virtual, that that commitment that they're making is going to be a year-long commitment. So once they opt for the Dragon Virtual, that will be their method of education for the remainder of the year. Families will be able to Families will be able to plan accordingly. We as a, an organization will be able to staff accordingly. In the Dragon Virtual, the students would have one general teacher along with some specials teachers. And that will cause, uh, a shuffling of staff, uh, once we get these Dragon Virtual numbers. Uh, identifying who's going to be our Dragon Virtual teachers, as well as who's going to be our in-person teachers. So there will be some, um, uh, significant staff changes that will happen across our elementary schools. To accomplish these two, um, methods of delivery. And, um, we'll have more information as, as that rolls out. But that will be a significant piece to us moving forward is the Dragon Virtual registration. As far as for middle school, again, the same, uh, registration period, same policy, no late registrations. Uh, one difference is the commitment is semester-long. And, and again, that has to do with, uh, the courses that students have, uh, at, at the middle school. Um, as well as the high school, they're very similar. Uh, but we would then have them, uh, recommit, uh, for a second semester. Or they could opt to go in-person, um, at the middle school level. We are not going to have in-person students move to a Dragon Virtual. This is really a, uh, a staffing issue. Uh, we could end up with an influx moving to Dragon Virtual, which would then cause us to pull a, uh, staff member that's on a schedule. Which would then cause us to have to remove all of those classes from that teacher's schedule. Uh, which would then impact 25 kids, 20 kids for each of those classes that teacher had. And so you could see why that would create some challenges. So, uh, we are not going to be allowing that movement. Important to note that the, um, with the Dragon Virtual, that the electives, uh, will be taught by our staff, um, or the Edge Annuity staff. So there's going to be a mix of that possibly depending on the course. There's going to be a significant amount of commitment for our staff to provide the virtual, um, uh, the virtual courses. And so we're really looking forward to that collaboration. And if things don't work out and we don't have a respective staff member, uh, from Lake Orion that's able, um, in their schedule to teach. We can use Edge Annuity, um, and, and they do have teachers that could provide the instruction. So our core classes will follow the, a consistent schedule. And then the electives, uh, would be something that would be, uh, asynchronous, which again is an independent, uh, learning environment. As far as Dragon Virtual at the high school, again, we have the same registration, uh, time period, same policy. Uh, and this too is a, a semester-long commitment. And then they will have the option, second, uh, semester and what they want to do for their, uh, delivery. Uh, the learning is independent, it's, uh, asynchronous. And there will be office hours each week and, you know, certainly they can make appointments with those, uh, teachers that they have and, and what are called mentors. But we will be using the Edge Annuity curriculum. And that is something that's aligned with the, uh, Lake Orion curriculum. And we will have limited electives offered, uh, for, for our Dragon Virtual students. So it's important to note that the, uh, Edge Annuity is a program that many districts use. In fact, many districts use that, uh, from elementary, middle and high school. Uh, we do have the opportunity to, uh, align their curriculum with our curriculum. And our staff has been working to do that. So what that means is take those courses that they have made. And then we take and put the tweaks that we have, um, seen as valuable for the education of our students. And we implement those, uh, standards as we move forward. So the curriculum is the rigor- rigorous curriculum that, that we would expect, um, for our, um, Lake Orion students. So I want to work through a little bit, and this is, you know, I talk about this each time, what the different pieces of data are. And I, I can't emphasize enough how valuable our relationship with the Oakland County Health Division has been over the last, your last month. It's really been good. It was a struggle, um, you know, frankly, early on to, to best understand some guidance and, and how this virus was acting in our communities, but they've really done a nice job. Uh, we've had some situations where we've had to lean on them with some specific, um, cases. And they've been really great. And I think it's really important for people to understand when we're going through these, uh, investigations, they call them. With the contact tracing, what they're finding out for us through this investigation is where the transmission occurred. Based on their investigation. And that's really important information for us. So that we can decide what we do with our programs, with our classroom, with our school. Uh, what they're finding often, uh, across the county is oftentimes those transmissions are occurring at, you know, weekend parties. They're occurring outside of school functions. Um, and currently with students not being in person, mostly across our county. There hasn't been as much transmissions within school programs. Uh, but certainly that, you know, becomes something that, that will, uh, start to occur as you bring more people together. They have created, uh, there has been some additional guidance for in-person, uh, instruction. And they have, uh, basically put that out. It was just last week, but it comes up to county risk levels. And they count 14-day, uh, cases. And so I think that's really important. And, and it's important that people understand when they look at that, if they do choose to look at that, that is a guide. And so from there, we then look, uh, there's some different columns. We then look at where our case counts are and what our narrative is of our school district and make the decisions that's best for our district. We're not going to make this district decisions based on the entire county. So I just wanted to make sure to share that. The testing results now, uh, you know, have been coming back within 48 hours. That's been really great. And one of the pieces of data that have been extremely valuable, that they have been able to extrapolate these last four weeks. That helps us is the COVID-19 data, uh, per 10,000. And they have that by school districts. And you can see I have them in order. When it first came out, we were at 17.2, um, and then we went to 21.1. Then we dropped to 14.5 and then we dropped last week to eight. Those are, that's very encouraging for us to have, um, three weeks of positive trend. Talking to the epidemiologist yesterday, it's still kind of in a hole. It hasn't, hasn't really spiked. And again, that was, that was yesterday. The data comes out tomorrow. So we'll have a better sense as to, um, you know, the, the whole Labor Day. Results and, and families coming together and what that looks like, but really looking forward to some positive results. This data is really important because this tells what the likelihood of transmission is. And so we use that, and again, the narrative behind these numbers is what's really important. So don't get too caught up. If you're somebody that's following the numbers, if the numbers spike, it might be, you know, a senior housing center. It could be a different age group. And so we get all of that information that's not, you know, put out in the, in the dashboard, so to speak, and that helps us make decisions. We did add, and I mentioned, uh, a bit ago, a medical personal, uh, personnel advisory, uh, committee, which, uh, has been very valuable. Uh, they are local people, working with our local students, our local families. They're giving me feedback and, you know, letting us know how things have been impacted, uh, things that they hear. And that help us ma- helps us make decisions moving forward. And then certainly, as I've mentioned before, we continue to, we, uh, meet weekly. I, I do with all of the county superintendents. Uh, and I also have a group of, uh, six superintendents, uh, that meet, uh, on Tuesdays as well. So, uh, lots of meetings, lots of discuss- discussion. And these are, uh, decisions that are weighing on, on all of our districts and our county. Some might ask, why can't we get back, uh, to school sooner? And so I want to make sure that people understand what we will be doing in this transition. So this, this particular week, yeah, I'm asking the board to consider, uh, these two options that I, that I just, uh, talked about. And then the next, uh, two days, we will be providing information to all of our families. Uh, not everybody watches these board meetings, so we want to make sure that we're getting out all of the information. So that people know, hey, next week, Dragon Virtual is open. Next week, weeks when you got to decide whether you want to be in Dragon Virtual for the remainder of the year. Or if you want to come back to school in the way that the school environment is going to be. So we are going to allow a week for families to make that decision. During that week of September 28th, we will be, uh, doing some informational meetings. And making sure that people have all the questions, uh, all the answers to their questions. The following week, we now have the extremely valuable information of how many Dragon Virtual students we have. So from that, we will make student schedules for all of our in-person. And all of our in-person students will have their schedule, will be able to make enrollment updates for all of our buildings. That is a significant undertaking and we are working to get that done within a week. There will be a lot of work done with our staffs and, and I'm confident that they will be able to do that. Then the next two weeks is going to, uh, again, we talked about the staff placements. But everything is based on the Dragon Virtual. That will tell us the number of in-person sections we need, as well as the number of virtual sections. So, once we get that information, we then will know how many staff we need at each school. And then how many staff we need at each grade level. And then we'll be looking across the district at grade levels, using the staff to try to identify who is going to be a Dragon Virtual teacher and who is going to be an in-person teacher. We will have our sections created during this point in time for the, um, for the staff. Class lists will be created, uh, and sent out to family or notified, uh, families will be notified. So they know, you know, what the, who their teacher is and how to move forward. All of the bus routes would need to be reworked, uh, which is a significant undertaking. We currently have bus routes going right now for, uh, you know, the students that are here. All of that will change. And, um, at the, in the same time, we'll be getting those kids to school, we'll be creating new bus routes all across our district. To make sure that we're bringing in all the in-person students that need transportation. Communication's going to be key, just like it always is with everything. So we'll be working hard over those two weeks to make sure families know their next steps. Uh, food service is going to be tasked with not only feeding those students that are in person. But they'll be tasked with feeding those students as they walk out the door at the high school. They'll be tasked with feeding students that are in our virtual program, uh, based on our summer flexibility. They'll still have that option. So there's going to be a lot of moving parts in the food service and all of our facilities will be set up accordingly. Our, our facilities, uh, our classrooms won't have, um, you know, a lot of, um, unnecessary furniture in them. Uh, the furniture that's going to be in there, uh, will do the best that we can with the social distancing. And, and make sure that we have the number of, uh, seats basically for those that will be showing up for the in-person instruction. So that's going to take a lot of work. It'll be done in, in all of our school buildings. So you can see each of our different labor groups is going to have a huge part in pulling together in that two-week period to make this all work for our students. And, and of course, on, um, October 26th, when we're bringing back our elementary students. We then will be, uh, having our special education, uh, students return in the five days a week, like I had, uh, mentioned, uh, in the previous slide. Some other things to consider, uh, November 3rd, uh, as you look at calendars, that will be a no-school day for elementary. And that's a professional development day. And we're just bringing that to people's attention. And that was, it was on calendars and there was some adjustment made when we were in a remote setting. Uh, but that was a scheduled professional development day, but November 3rd will be that day. Uh, and so our staff will be doing professional development, so students will not have instruction on that day. Uh, age span data, uh, is data that I get from the Oakland County Health Department. It is available, uh, on their dashboard, but that tells us, I believe it's on their dashboard. But that tells us which age groups are still experiencing COVID outbreaks. And when you look at that, you can recognize that your high, our high school age students are still that age group that are, um, there, where there still is some concern. Certainly as you start to get into the college, uh, age group, there, you know, those are higher. Uh, but the students that we're dealing with, uh, that we have the largest concern with at this point, uh, is still our high school students. Uh, most of the cases that have been seen in school districts are related to outside, uh, events. I talked about that a little bit earlier. Uh, and I can't emphasize enough that we cannot have late registrations for Dragon Virtual. The Dragon Virtual numbers are what will drive everything for our in-person, as well as, uh, our Dragon Virtual. We will no longer have the need for Dragons Den, um, starting, uh, October 26th. Because we will have, uh, you know, the options of the in-person as well as the, uh, Dragon Virtual. And I also, um, wanted to mention that the school-age childcare, uh, known as SAC will begin on 10/26 when we start up i- in our elementaries. And it's really important to understand that as we do all of this, uh, our teams are continuing to work with our labor groups to implement. To make sure all of this works, to make sure we have the staff to do the things that we need to do to make it a great experience, uh, for our, uh, students. Moving forward, uh, after all of these options are, uh, considered and selected. As we continue, we'll continue to look at the phases that the state of Michigan has put us in. As far as where we're at, uh, we've talked about the Michigan, uh, phases previously. I won't elaborate on that. Certainly we can look at our experiences that we've had with our programs. Which, you know, we've had a lot of success with our programs so far, knock on wood. Uh, and we continue to, uh, look for positive results with that. We are looking across, uh, other districts. Mr. Bucky talked about that a little bit. You know, we've seen some, uh, different, uh, interruptions of, of the continuity of learning. And, you know, what has caused that, you know, we're, we're very fortunate that we're able to collaborate with other districts to understand what has happened and what the rest of the story is, so that we can try to avoid those types of things. The health department again has been great to work with. They will, they will help and make recommendations. They will not make decisions for us. Uh, but they will make recommendations. Uh, and then the test result timing, that if that continues, uh, to be as rapid as it currently is. That will really help us with the contact tracing. And then again, the positive test in the district boundaries, if we continue to have, uh, positive trends with that, it'll be awesome. And we'll be in a great situation. Hospital capacity has not been an issue for some time. Uh, and the vaccine progress, that will be important for, for some people, uh, but that's something we'll continue to look at. And then certainly student, staff and community feedback as we roll into these, uh, two new options. And again, the Harvard Global Health Me- uh, Metrics, uh, basically is telling us that we're in a position that we can, uh, move forward and offer the opportunity for in-person instruction. Which we are, uh, recommending, uh, that we do at Lake Orion Community Schools. So that was a lot of information, I know. Um, some of it was new, some of it, uh, you know, probably wasn't. But at this time, I want to give you the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions and have some discussion about what we intend for our students moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know that as you were speaking, I continually was writing. And every time I wrote a question, you, you had an answer for it. But besides that, I'm sure that there are other questions and comments from the board. And, uh, let's start with Mary Jo.
Thanks Jim. Um, Ben, I just want to make sure that everybody understands asynchronous. And when you say independent, it doesn't mean that they wouldn't have teacher support if they needed it, right?
That is correct.
Okay, because sometimes I think parents think independent like these kids are on their own. And the other part of that is that I know the terminology is kind of new to everybody. Asynchronous means that they can do it on their own schedule, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. And then my other question is, I know you can't foresee the future. But in terms of the elementary classroom, what is the expectation of a class size? Could we theoretically have a full classroom like we're used to in the past of elementary students in one space?
Well, I, that, that's, that's why the Dragon Virtual is so very important. So once we get the registration, we'll be able to tell you what class sizes look like at the point in time and, and, and whatnot. So the, the thing that we have to make sure of is that we're doing the best we can to social distance. Students are wearing masks and, you know, we're, you know, we're exhibiting, you know, the, the behaviors that the CDC and the Health Department or Health Division is, um, asking. Do we think that we're going to have high class sizes for in-person? Uh, we, we don't. Um, but again, it's based on, um, the Dragon Virtual. Now, we may get a, a very small amount of people, uh, that want Dragon Virtual. Because they, they love the, uh, in-person Lake Orion education. If that's the case, we're going to have more students. And then, so what that means is we're going to have to identify spaces and do the best we can to social distance. We know we're not going to provide six feet in every classroom all across the district. It's going to be based on the number of people and, and the capacity of, of that classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary Jo. Others? Yes, Scott.
Thanks Ben. Um, I just had a question regarding, um, I'm a logistics person. So I'm thinking, um, as far as the high school schedule with the nine forty start, but then they have an 8:00 AM su- for support. Is the busing, um, getting them there at nine forty or getting them there early enough for them to get some of that support?
We'll continue to work, uh, bus routes, and that's a really good question, uh, Scott. But we'll continue to work with the bus routes. I can't really commit an answer to you right now. I'm not trying to be evasive. We have a four-tier busing system. And once we develop that, then we will know exactly what the pickup- what the pickup and drop-offs and, and all of that will be. Your point is, you know, very valid, and the purpose is to support our students during that point in time, so we'll be able to get back with you once we get the, the transportation information.
Just as long as it's on the radar, I realize that we're just kind of, we're okaying a plan moving forward, that we've got a month to get it all done, so, I'm cool with that, I just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, that's in the thought process.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Others? Yes, Jake.
Yeah, it works now, because actually, I had a couple of follow-up questions to what, what just got asked, so I'll start with Scott. Transportation, is that going to require a sign-up, or, we had talked before, because of social distancing on buses, are we looking for families to commit that if they're willing to drop their kids off, then we don't need to assign them a bus? Is that going to be, is there going to be a sign-up period, you know, what does that look like?
John, do you want to, do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to take a step?
From a, from a scheduling point of view, that's, again, going back to the Dragon Virtual signup, is those students are identified, those are pulled out of the student pool, so in effect, it's going to be a self-fulfilling opt-out. We have talked with the possibility of doing a, a survey on top of that, for any additional opt-outs, to try and capture, but really, what it really boils down to, when it comes to scheduling a routing system within the district, once the Dragon Virtual kids are out of that mix, it really becomes a, a setup of the system, so that whether we're carrying our normal 3,500 kids, or 1,000 kids, the bus loads just get smaller. You know what I'm talking about, from a logistics point of view, the route coverage is still going to have to be there. So there will be flexibility, some tightening and adjusting as we go through, but it'll still be a pretty semi-normal district coverage route setup.
Yeah, because I was more worried about the capacity, that are, are, do we think we're going to be able to get the capacity, because at, at one point in time, there was a big concern about the amount of distancing that would be needed on a bus, that would, that would take the capacity of the very big buses from many dozens of students to few dozens of students. Is that still a concern?
Yeah, the Michigan Safe School roadmap, put out by the Governor's Office, addresses that from the perspective of, they, they fully understand the, the structure and limitations of a bus size, so it is required before any student gets on a bus to show the, the clear-to-go app, that they're, they're feeling good. Before they get on the bus, there's assigned seating and masks, and, in terms of the seating structure, there is a, a more spread-out approach, but again, it'll be a case where we're not getting six feet per, because just the nature of a bus. But, the other, the other side of that coin is, is that bus seats are extremely high, so they're almost going to be put in their own little cubicle worlds, anyway, particularly for the younger elementaries, where they're just shorter in stature.
Good, thank you.
So... Is that a Jake, or go ahead?
No, I had another question that follows up on, on Mary Jo's question, about, when you talked about the class sizes could be smaller, depending on how many are assigned to Dragon Virtual, well, my ma, my mind went to, well, assuming the staff size is con, constant, does that mean that sections of Dragon Virtual will have more students in them, so that the number, the, you know, the staff-to-student ratio there is greater, so the more students that sign up, do you get where I'm going at with the question?
Yeah, and I, we can't assume that our, our staff number is stagnant, because we, we will be taking existing Lake Orion staff to do the Dragon Virtual at the elementary. So, that, we won't, and, and that could take, we, Rick's worked really hard to give us some different scenarios, anywhere from 15%, 20%, 25%, how many staff we would need, so we would be taking that number of teachers out of the in-person option, they would be the Dragon Virtual option, now, there are districts that have, they had, you know, they've set some different numbers and whatnot, and Rick's working really hard with our labor groups to come up with a, a number that we can provide an education, not only in-person, in a, in a great format, but in the Dragon Virtual in a great format, and they're working out what that number is going to look like. Again, that's a work in progress. At the secondary levels, the Dragon Virtual is not going to look the same as we talked about, but I, I think your question really had to do with the elementary, so I think that addresses it.
And then my, the last one I have right now is, one of the things that drove my decision, you know, to start the year remotely, was staff concerns, and, and the survey that you had, that showed that, you know, a significant percentage of our teachers were uncomfortable, can you touch on that aspect, and, and, and give some insights as to, you know, where we're at now, in terms of, you know, now that the school year has started, where we're at with...
Sure, yeah, and that, and that's a fair question, and I think it's really important, and I, and I have said this before, but I feel that I need to reiterate it, that the staff survey that we did was to try to get a gauge as to where people were at, and what their concerns were, so we could address those concerns. So, the staff didn't make a decision, and weren't, weren't saying we weren't coming back to work, you know, though, that type of thing, I want to be very clear on that, our staff has been wonderful to work with, and, and so, the difference between then and now, if you recall the timeframe, they hadn't been back to their buildings, and so we reached out to them through a survey, asking them some specific questions, and then had some open-ended questions about what their concerns were, if we were to go back in in-person, what their concerns were if we were to go back in, in a remote setting, so then we attacked those things, and put things in place moving forward. In the meantime, we've welcomed our staff back, our staff is working in the buildings, which not all districts have their staff working in buildings, we feel very grateful that our teachers are coming in, and they're working out of their classrooms at least three days a week, and we've had the opportunity to walk the hallways, to talk with them. Rick and Heidi have spent an immense amount of time with the LOEA, to, to make sure that all of their concerns are being addressed, and we'll continue to do that, because there's still more to attack. So that's really how we're getting the feedback now, it's not about a, a survey, and that's a great question, because ultimately, our staff is what's going to make the difference with our students, and so we're doing everything we can to accommodate, you know, the labor agreements, and, and just the personal needs, so that they can function professionally at the highest level.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Others? Yes, Burgett, please.
Good evening, thank you, Ben, for the, for the presentation, I have, and thank you, board members, for your thoughtful questions, you've asked some of, some that are similar to mine, but I, I do have several more. I want to take you back first, Ben, to your referencing to the Oakland County Health Department, and the information they're providing for you, and I try to keep up with it a little bit here and there, and I know that that's been an evolution in, of itself, as they have, I believe they're supporting you better, much better now than they were starting out with. One thing I've noticed in their information is, and I think I heard you say, cases per 10,000, but I often still see in their information, cases per million, so, it's, one of, one of my pet peeves is just when things aren't referred to consistently, and this is not on you, this is more on, on the Health Department, when they, when they put things forward, so, just, just curious how, how that's going for you, if that gets answered for you, when you, do you have to crunch data yourself, are they providing your, you with the proper information that you want, and that you and your superintendent group are requesting?
Yeah, I can't emphasize enough that how, how valuable the, they have been, and certainly, the epidemiologist has been wonderful. They're answering all the questions, they, they, you know, they respond to text messages, phone calls, she, you know, they, they know our, she knows our cellphone numbers, so she's, you know, dialoguing with us, it's, it's been terrific. We had our situation that we dealt with last week, you know, a text message, you know, phone call, we, we were getting the support we need. I couldn't ask the Oakland County Health Division to do more for, for our support at this point in time. The thing that you talked about with the cases, that is one of the real struggles, and so, that's why, and I talk, you hear me say about the stories and the narrative and all that, the time that we get with our epidemiologist is so enlightening, because she puts that together for us. We're no longer left where we used to be, to understand, you know, the Harvard Matrix, and what we're seeing from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, you know, we, they have the total cases, they have the recent cases, they have this, the latest guidance, and that's 14 days, and they're doing seven days, so she puts all that together for us. We kind of joke that, that we're ready for that, you know, epidemiology badge, because, you know, we can, we can talk a little bit like, like her now, so, if I show up one day and I have a badge on, that she, she followed through with us, so, but they've been great.
So not to belabor that point much longer, but one of the things that also irritated me about the information, and it sounds like they're helping you, or this person's helping you immensely, is the probable cases, because there's a differentiation within the testing and the accuracy of it, and whenever they include probable cases, they're not definite, but they add them to your positive cases, and it skews the positivity rate, and it makes it look like, what are we even doing walking around? So, I, I just hope, and I'm trusting you to look at all of that, and weigh that as, as we go forward, and I, I appreciate that you're doing all that, all that work, Ben.
I want to men, I want to mention, too, that the positive, I, I'm going to, it's important for people to know, when they look, the positivity rate is going to go up, because the, the guidance has changed, where they don't just send people to take a test, they send if you have symptoms, and the likelihood of somebody that already is exhibiting symptoms, being positive, is going to be higher. So, we're going to see our positivity rates go up, and I think people need to understand that, and be comfortable with that, and, and recognize that that's the reason, you, you know, looking at how that's impacting our hospitals is important, and looking at how that's impacting our school district is what's most important, and that's what I continue to pay attention to.
And, and to be clear about that, you're right, I know when they said that they're going to offer the testing for children, but the caveat is, that you're, you come when you're symptomatic, it's, it's not asymptomatic people, they're looking for the symptomatic people, but keep in mind that we're just kind of meandering into the cold and flu season, so, there's going to be a lot of look-alike illnesses out there, too, and I don't want people to panic, just because people have symptoms. But I will move on at this point, I appreciate the information about the staff, and, that you touched on the survey, because I was also going to bring that up, and I know you're working for, moving forward with this, and it, this is, for lack of a better reference, all hands on deck, right? This is a massive undertaking. I, I may or may not have heard you at some point say, it's like, starting the school year over again, when we start, do something like this, so, one of the things I was concerned about with this, when I first saw it, was, to be, to be honest, again, I was disappointed that it was October 26th, you know, I see, I see my colleagues in Birmingham, or any number of places, starting in, in a faster case scenario, I don't know how they're doing it, but when I see you put this forth of all the work that it takes to, okay, now we're remote, now we're going to totally change gears, that this, this, in spite of the fact that we're using the word pivot, you can't pivot too quickly on the Titanic to make it turn around into a new plan, so...
If I, if I could, because I don't want to lose, lose your, your thought on that, because I know that that's probably something a lot of people are saying.
Right.
When you, there's, there's a difference between in-person in District A, and in-person in District B, so there are districts that are, that are, that are announcing that they're going to be in-person, and they're giving a date, but what that means is they're going to start to bring their special education students in.
They're starting at the beginning.
Doesn't mean they're bringing in all of their kids, and I think the other piece that I want to share is that our Dragon Virtual is driving everything, and we've made the conscious effort to provide a Dragon Virtual at our elementary level, with our teachers, with our curriculum, using the instruction that we're currently doing, we're not using the edgenuity at the elementary level, because we really believe strongly in the, in the literacy and the instruction that we have, that our teachers can deliver, and it is taking us a little more time, but darn it, we're going to be proud of what it is that our kids are going to be doing at the elementary, and we know that edgenuity has a, has a great place in this virtual environment. We believe that the virtual environment for our elementary students is worth a couple more weeks to, to start right, rather than fast.
Got it. So I do appreciate that you took the time in your, in your presentation to go through that, to help us and the community understand what it's taking to bring in-person back, and so, I'm going to say it out loud, even though it's going to sound redundant, just, just to say it again, October 26th is the initiation of this, and that's the soonest you can do this, in the best way possible.
It is.
To do it any more quickly would, could be, is it safe to say disastrous?
Let's just say our cabinet spent a significant amount of time figuring out what needed to be done, and how we could do it in the most rapid way possible with quality, and this is where we landed. We could have, right, you know, we could, one of the things, I'm not necessarily patient all the time, right, so, I'm like, thinking, well, we could do, one of my mindsets was, why can't we just do Dragon Virtual for two days? You know, people know, or they don't know, you know, and so, you know, the people in the room are saying, well, this is why, Ben, well, think about this, think about that, and then, all of a sudden, we're at five days, and it makes a lot of sense, we need to make sure people are educated, so, anyways, I, I, we've spent a significant amount of time, not only as a cabinet, but labor groups, certainly, there are LOEA, you know, our teachers, and, yeah, this is the soonest we're going to get back, and we're going to be proud of what it is that our kids are going to experience.
So, on the in-person and the virtual, and I heard you say, they, you, the opening, where is the date? We get this week to decide, and September 28th, that's the week of registration, and is it similar to the way you handled it in the summer? Do you, does everyone register for one or the other, or do you register for virtual, and then if you don't register for virtual, you're face-to-face?
Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it's the Dragon Virtual, and then, those that aren't registered for Dragon Virtual will be in-person, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, just thought I'd clarify that, I'm sure you're going to do that in future communications as well. When I think about elementary, and I can't help but not think about the buildings that we have under construction, and knowing that there was a lot going on at Carpenter, are we all set? Is there anything, special considerations for the buildings with construction?
Sure, that's a fair question, and when they, when we, when we opted to move to the remote learning, because we felt that was the best way to continue our education, Heidi and the team worked with them to say, we're going to have this group in, these teachers will be in, but our students won't be in, and they gave them timeframes, they, they will be ready, there's, there's not any issue there, frankly, they, you know, they would have been ready if we would have, would have said three weeks sooner, that has no bearing on, on our decision with when we're bringing our kids back.
The one, the one piece that will not be done, but that was always in the plan, and I was going to report on this later, under bond, but is the Orion Oaks office, and that was always planned to not be done until November.
Right. Thank you for that.
So, I'm going to jump to the high school now, and then you talked about lunch, and how the day's starting, every day starts like a late start Wednesday, which I can almost hear the high school students cheering about that, so, and then you emphasize the fact that there, there won't be lunch during the day, but they can have a grab-and-go lunch at the end. And when I look at that schedule, I, I get that, I can see where that works, because if you actually were a high school student, and school started at 7:30, and you had the, I think it's D-lunch, the very last lunch, you weren't eating till 12:30, 12:40, anyway, so that actually is a similar timeframe, that if you started school, and you had D-lunch, the last lunch, that's that same kind of timeframe, just to put it in perspective for people. But my quest, the bigger question I have is, the free and reduced students, on late start Wednesdays last year, and in previous years, we would offer a breakfast when they got there, is that something that we'll be doing, or no, is that just going to tip the scale, or how, or what can we do about that?
Well, you know, there's, it's a good question, and, and food service plays a huge part in the education of our students, and so, there was, there's, there's answers to be had, I don't have that answer, and that's something we'll get back, we do exactly what the food service, we talked about how the food service has pivoted, they're going to have to, they're going to have to pivot, you know, based on the number of kids, and, and all of that, so, we're confident that kids are going to be fed, for sure, and I do want to make sure that you understand that, you know, that anything we can do to feed kids, we're going to do, so we'll have to get back with you on that specific.
I appreciate that, there's kids that really need that
Sure.
...support in the morning, too. Getting, and an understanding of what you touched on, I think this was a part of Jake's realm of... Getting an understanding of what you touched on, I think this was a part of Jake's realm of questions, when we were talking about, I think it touched more on busing for Jake, but it might have come back to numbers and buildings and social distancing and our capacity for that. Now, our high school is the only one that will be doing a hybrid schedule. So that's, for lack of a better word, it's easier for that social distancing to occur in that scenario. But in elementary and middle school, we're not doing a hybrid schedule. So all those students come back. But the understanding was, I don't want people to panic when they hear that you're not going to be able to provide six feet of distancing, because that wasn't even in our original plan. And to give perspective on that, Europe went back to school, and the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics said, three feet's okay. So Europe started back with a meter of social distancing. And that, to me, is more of what I see probably going on in our elementary and middle schools. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I think that you brought up something that's a daily challenge for all of us in these tremendous decisions that we have to make, as guidance is changing daily. And, you know, so, you know, we're working hard to do, you know, the best we can with the information we have on that respective day, and we'll adjust as necessary. But yes, we do believe that we're going to, you know, be in an area of three feet, you know, and probably more, you know, in some cases. It's just going to depend on, you know, the amount of, the number of students. We're going to be clearing out classrooms with things that aren't essential. And a classroom is going to look different for a while, and it might not look as stimulating as it's going to in the future, and it did in the past. But we're going to try to maximize the space as much as possible.
Got it. So one other thing I wanted to ask you about was special ed, and you touched on recovery services, which was something I wanted to ask you about. I know that it was mentioned with some of the government, the governor's orders, but it wasn't necessarily requirement, the recovery services, and you touched on it in your presentation, and I was hoping you could tell me a little bit more about that.
Well, what I know about that, and I don't know if Heidi has any additional information, but actually, why don't you just, are you comfortable just attacking?
Absolutely. Kids have to qualify for it.
Okay, right.
It's based on their progress, and it's decided in an IEP.
So it's an assessment, and are you just going, is it as simple to say that you would assess all the students? Because recovery services, my understanding of it is, for the foregone education that our special ed students probably experienced in the spring, or am I simplifying that too much?
No, and it's not just based on one assessment. We take a look at what they, you know, what they accomplished in the spring, what they're accomplishing now, and all of that information is presented in the IEP team, and they have a discussion regarding the progress of the student and whether they need recovery services or not.
So I'm glad to hear that you're addressing that. I know that there's some huge disappointment, not just in Oakland County, but around the state, and there's some upset about a lack of response in some areas to recovery services. So I appreciate that you're following through with that for our most vulnerable students. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think the frustration comes in, and people don't understand, is that kids just don't automatically get it, get the recovery services. They do have to qualify. There has to be a need shown that they have not made progress.
Okay, all right.
And Berg, I don't claim that we're perfect, but I do want to share that we have had a number of districts that have reached out to us at the model we're using to bring our special education students in. And I think that that, you know, speaks to, you know, what we're doing and the difference that we're making. We're not sitting back and, you know, just trying some things. We're bringing them in and making things happen. So I wanted to share that as well.
I appreciate that. One of the last things I wanted to talk to you about or ask you about is the social-emotional learning and the support that we'll be able to provide for students. Do we have any specific platforms that we're using? Some of the things that concern me about this are, and this is for children, this isn't even on adults, that pre-COVID clinical diagnosis of anxiety was an overall average of about 3%. And now, in the midst of COVID, it's up to 30%, and that's a pretty staggering number given for children. And the adults are probably a little bit more of a concern as well, with 40% of adults struggling with mental health or substance abuse issues since COVID started. So there's a clear need, both with kids and adults, for that kind of support. And I'm hoping that we'll be addressing that, or with the platform, or can you expand on any plans to support? How will support our students and staff? I don't really staff out of that.
You want me to answer that? Okay, we're not using any particular platform regarding the social-emotional. Those lessons and the things that we are addressing come from the family school coordinator, as well as our counselors, as well as to our teachers. So, and that is occurring now, and has been occurring throughout, and will continue. Another thing is we provide a lot of our staff professional development regarding these areas, such as trauma and things like that. We've been doing that for a couple of years now, because as you said, anxiety is one of those statistics that continues to be on the rise. And so, you know, we are, that's how we're addressing it. We keep that, not that we don't, you know, borrow things from, you know, other districts that we see, or, you know, curriculum, but one of the things that we really are, I would say, real emphatic about is making sure that what we're using is appropriate for the age level of our student, and is appropriate for a school to be addressing, rather than a parent. There is a line there, right? And so, you know, we want to be cautious of that, making sure that we are addressing the students' needs, but we're doing that in collaboration with the parent as well. In regards to, you know, our staff, we do have an employee assistance program, and Rick can speak to this a little bit more, but many services are provided, you know, under that. It's titled as the EAP, which is an employee assistance plan. So there are services and support built in for our staff as well.
Is that something we can add to the screening process for our staff? As simple as, how are you feeling today?
I'm not sure of your question. Are you talking about the Clear2Go app?
Yeah, yeah, well, I know other districts have started doing this with some of their staff, just to ask the question, to start to make them think about how they're feeling coming into work. So I just wondered if that's something that you would entertain, or you think that's worthwhile? Isn't something you would stop them from showing up at work necessarily? It's just taking the care out of finding out how your employees are doing?
Would building leadership kind of take on that role?
I mean, that's something that we try to do on a personal level, not necessarily through an app, making sure that we're getting around, talking to our staff. Honestly, I don't think an app question is the way to go about it. It's that personal touch, I think, that our staff really truly appreciates, and that's where it needs to be. Not through a simple of an asking, you know, of a question. It's in making sure that we're paying attention to our staff, too, if they seem to be acting a little different, making sure that we're following up. And I think our building leadership does a pretty good job about that. We also have the district well-being committee that has been now in place for a few years, and our staff has really come to enjoy that. You know, that the teaching and learning department also joined, you know, with the well-being, and did a whole focus on self-care last year. That continued throughout the summer, and we'll be doing that still again this year. So there are different avenues that we have in place to make sure that our employees are getting what they need as well. That's very important. We've got to make sure that our employees are fed, so to speak, before they deal with our students.
And if I can add to that, you know, when you're talking with board members across the county and things like that, and I know you get a lot of information from that, one of the things that's different is our staff is here. And so our principals are here, and our principals are seeing them on a daily, and it's not just about, you know, sending them emails and, you know, communicating through an app and text messaging. They physically see them. And that's a difference, and I think it's just important to understand the whole climate and the culture that people are in, when you're hearing the different programs that people are doing. Just, that's just my, just wanted to add that, because it makes a difference when you can put your eyes and ears on a person.
I appreciate that. It wasn't sold on it. It was a conversation starter for me to bring that up and see, because I know that everyone's stressed, and I appreciate everything our teachers are doing, but I know that they're working hard and they're tired, and I just, I care about them, and I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and meeting their needs as best we can. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that thought, Berg. I appreciate that. Do you have any other questions?
I'm done at this time. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks. I think Scott had another one. Please.
Thanks, Jim. As everyone knows, I'm always an optimist, but I just want to ask the question, what's kind of our disaster plan in an outbreak? Is there, is it something that, I don't even need to say it, you tell me, because I don't need to guess.
Yeah, so we do have, we have plans in place. If, you know, we do have an identified COVID case, we have a process that we follow. Basically, Rick communicates through the health department, and then the contact tracing occurs. We identify how many are in close contact, how many cases we have. And again, we would work directly with epidemiologists to hear their medical and their science reasoning, and how we should behave. The one thing that I learned recently has a lot to do with where the transmission, they identified where the transmissions occurred. That's really important. So, and it's, you're probably tired of hearing it, but everything's a case-by-case basis. So, you know, if we start getting, you know, cases, we'll be doing the contact tracing with the health department, or they'll be doing it with our information, and then we'll be listening and making some decisions. Now, if a whole class, we'll just use the, you call it a disaster plan, I think. So if a whole class has to quarantine, and it's an in-person environment, obviously, we then would, we would then go to the remote setting where we're currently at now. That's if a whole class had to go down. If it was, had to quarantine. If it was a situation where it was, you know, one or two students, we would deal with them like they were, you know, an absent student.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, Mary Jo.
Sorry about that. Really quickly, in the plan that's on here, that you have a bullet point that says plan for getting students home if they are not cleared to ride. So I would assume that something happened during the day, you know, they came to school, but they now show symptoms or something, and there's not a parent to take them home. Do we have a plan for that yet?
That is one of those items that we're continuing to work through. So that is, you know, that is something that we know is going to happen, because it happens in every, you know, school every year, right? Somebody's sick, and there isn't somebody available, so then figuring out how to do that. And Rick has a little more to add, I think.
Yeah, Mary Jo, one of the requirements is that we have a quarantine room available in every building for children who are symptomatic. So we've been designating those spaces in each of our buildings, getting some input from the county health department nurses on the setup and the makeup of those buildings. Air purifiers, John's department has provided for each of those rooms, and we're working with identifying the staff who will supervise those rooms when children are in there. So yes, we have, we have the contingency plan. The issue will be when we have a difficult time reaching someone to come and pick that child up. Just by way of reference, I can tell you that one district's plan is to have the police escort those children home. And that is by far not what we intend to do.
Oh, thank you for saying that. Thank you, Rick and Ben. I appreciate that.
Okay, other questions? Steve, Nate. Let's go with Nate, and I'll come back to Steve there.
Okay, mine is more just to share where my head is than ask a question in particular. I think, you know, looking at the achievement and the success of our school district, we've got a track record of setting and achieving goals. And, you know, we set the plans out, and we deliver on those plans. One of the realities of the world we're living in that has that acronym of, you know, there's a VUCA acronym with its origins in military, and made its way through business strategy of volatile, uncertain, complex, and ambiguous. And when we're in that situation, sometimes it means you create the best-laid plans, and the real mindset is the agility to adjust as you go. And we're certainly in that spot. Berg, you mentioned, you know, we're hitting a time where we have flu season, and there could be some panic with look-alike. We're also hitting a time where, and we're going into an environment where we're putting more people in a closer location against a virus that has exponential growth. So we also are going into a situation where we could create frustration when the best-laid plans change. And I think, you know, while it's awesome to have plans, and I'm really excited about this plan and excited to implement it, also want to make sure we're staying really clear and stay committed to that approach that says, we have the plan until the plan needs to change. And Ben and Cabinet have been really impressed with your ability to take in information and be able to make those decisions and guide us in that way. And it really is a balancing act, and I think we'd be, you know, perhaps looking at this the wrong way if we thought that these are the plans that we're setting the course to implement. Rather, these are the plans that we will implement under the set of circumstances that allow us, with the flexibility, to change. And that could be really frustrating for people if we need to change. But we've also demonstrated, we know how to take care of each other when that happens, and when those frustrations arise. So not a question per se, just sharing where my mind is as I'm taking all this in and processing it.
Great, thank you, Nate. I appreciate that. Steve?
Thank you, Jim. No questions, just a recommendation. I think we're all shocked when Ben indicated one school district was using a police officer to escort young children out of the waiting room, per se. The recommendation I have on Ben, if we can, or to the cabinet, make that room, the medical room, make it a comfort room. Make it, the stress is very high, as we all know. Let's make it a beautiful comfort room, and not a bare four walls. I'm just shocked to hear that a school district would not have good bedside manners to use a police officer. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, we've covered a lot of ground. There's been a lot of great questions. Sometimes those questions prompt other questions, and I want to pause here to, again, ask, what other questions does the board have regarding this plan, the implementation, the pieces of it, the levels, whatever those questions are? Let's ask those now, as clarifying questions to this whole plan. So everybody is in as good an understanding as they possibly can be of this plan. Other questions? Yes, Nate?
A quick one, the 8:00 AM, I forgot what they're called, the high school office hours or touch points. Are those intended to be for the students that are green team, white team? Or is that any team, or is there a direction on that?
Heidi, can you address that? He's talking about the student support times.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't reference it by the.
Yeah, that can be for either.
Thank you.
And just to comment on that, too, that those hours, Scott, to go back to your earlier question, they're intentional with those hours. That's pre-bus pickup times for late Wednesday, or for late starts. So that would be before any child was scheduled to get on the bus, 8:00, 8:45. Then the bus pickups usually start around that time, and get the kids here by 9:40. So that was intentional with the time of that.
Thanks, Rick. Yes, Scott?
You're exactly right. Something took my mind back to middle school, because I have a middle schooler. We had talked before, I know it was two plans ago, talking about keeping kids more in cohorts. I know that with the middle school, you know, the fact that we already have the team concept, is there any talk about, like, staggering their passing times or anything like that? So just that team stays together and isn't necessarily around other teams as much as possible? Or is that kind of off the table now?
Middle school is currently working on the passing time. But there will be some mixing, because the electives are mixed by the grade level.
Sure. But, I mean, we're thinking about that, because, I mean,
Absolutely.
Obviously, my kid goes to Oakview, so it's big. It's got big hallways, it's got lots of space, and those kids are okay. You get into Scripps is a little tighter, Walden's a little tighter. So I just want to make sure that if there are things that we can do that, you know, aren't much more difficult, and, you know, to save that exposure.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Other questions? Yes, Mary Jo, please.
This isn't a question as much as a comment. You know, if we're going to go through this. This isn't a question as much as, as a comment. You know, if we're going to go through this and, and go back into the classroom, just a, a recommendation or a reminder to parents that if there is an outbreak and a classroom has to go to remote, you really need to have your plan in place for what the students are going to do, because it's not going to be something that's three or four days down the road. It will be, one day those kids might be in school, the next day, you know, they might be having to stay home. So, just having that in the back of your mind, because the schedule change is not going to be gradual. It could be very quick. And, you know, for parents who work, you know, having to have something in place for their students if they're at home. I just wanted to put that out there now while we were talking about this.
Okay, thank you, Mary Jo. Yes, Jake?
And this is something I would put under the, to keep it real, that we're all excited about sending the kids back, but especially the little ones will need to be built an expectation of what they're going back to. It's not going to be the school that they, they knew before, because there's little things that you don't think about. If you're wearing a mask, you can't see your friends smiling at you. You can't read the teacher's expression. You can't go over and give a friend a hug when they're, when they're having, you know, hard times. That it's, it's going to be a different environment. So, getting the kids ready, because they're so excited, they're going to be so excited to go back to school. But the benefits of getting them back to school, I think we all see, but they have to understand it's not going to be the school that they used to go to. So, it, it's just something to put out there.
Thank you, Jake. Others? Questions? Yes, Berg, please.
Heidi, do we know if O-Tech is, are they still remote? Or are they coming back?
I do know that the high school is working with their schedule to make sure that ours, you know, and, and they have worked together in the, in the past, obviously. I'm not sure honestly if they're back or not.
I hadn't heard, so I didn't know if there was any.
But we have, we have had that discussion to make sure that, you know, it works with the O-Tech schedule.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Others? Yes, Scott?
I'm sorry. I just keep.
That's all right. Please, we want to get these out.
Absolutely. So, I know that high school, a big question in people's minds is probably, and in my mind is, how long are we going to do this split schedule? And I know it says that, you know, we will look at that, but is it something that we're going to go month by month to determine? You know, once January is done, you know, we say we're going to continue with this in February, and come March, we should be ready to go back full-time. Because I know when you're talking about 2,500 people, there's not, you know, the majority of businesses around us that are, as far as GM and Chrysler and places like that, those people aren't even at work, right? As far as office staff, essential workers are, and, and, and actually, you know, factory workers and things, I'm working. But, I mean, as far as that being a huge crowd of people, what is the anticipation? Is that, is the thought that it's probably for the year? Or are we looking at, looking at that every month?
Yeah, we will be looking at it regularly, and I hate to determine, say that it's every month, but I will commit to you that we will give you an update as to where we're at on this plan on a monthly basis. So, I think it's fair to say that you'll have, at least each month, you'll have some sort of an update. If there's going to be any changes, or there'll be a continuation in the hybrid. But it's really going to depend on, you know, how this virus continues to act in the community, and then also, you know, how our students are responding to things on the weekend and how it's impacting. And, yeah, so, yeah, you'll get monthly at least, and, and I'll give you updates as a board, you know, more frequently than that if there are going to be any changes.
Thank you. Questions? Please. Now's the time. Okay, hearing none. I, I have a couple of my own. One, and this was my primary question, was how could we expedite the return of our elementary students? And that was answered very clearly and in detail, that we are expediting them. We are moving them as quickly as we possibly can, and, and, and that I'm very thankful for. I did have a couple of other questions, because the virtual is, is really a linchpin to the plan and to the calendar that we, you've put together for returning for elementaries and beyond. I think it's important that we restate what the virtual commitment needs to be at each level. And I don't know, Heidi, maybe you were going to go over this in your report, or repeat it, or Ben, if you want to go over it. But, so we're very clear about what the commitment is for virtual. So, when people come to that decision week, that they're going to be able to make that decision and, and know that that's got to be made at that point. So, if you could talk about that first again.
Heidi, go ahead and say it, so it comes out of a different voice. Maybe it'll be.
There you go.
Heard better, right?
Yeah, I can give some highlights. I think what you're speaking to is more like what the schedule will look like.
Well, I, I'm really talking about the commitment that people need to make, either semester, a year. I want everybody to be clear on what that commitment is, so there's no confusion. And on November 15th, somebody says, that's not what I agreed to. No, we got to be really clear about this.
For the elementary level, you are committing for the remainder of the year. That's both for in-person and dragon virtual. So, essentially, you're making one choice, and that, that will stick for the remainder of the year. For middle school, the in-person is a commitment for the remainder of the year. The dragon virtual commitment is for November 9th through January 22nd. So, that is the rest of the semester when, when students return. And then dragon virtual students will have the option on January 22nd, well, prior to that, but for the next semester, whether they want to remain in dragon virtual or go back in person. For the high school, the in-person, again, like middle school, is for the remainder of the year. And then dragon virtual is the same as the middle school. It is a commitment November 9th through January 22nd. And then dragon virtual students would have the option of continuing for the remainder of the year in dragon virtual or coming back in person.
Thank you. And in-person's a full-year commitment.
That is correct.
Great. The other, the other question I had is if you could briefly review, and maybe Heidi, you could do this as well, just give a thumbnail of what the experience, the virtual experience looks like at elementary, at middle school and at high school, because they're going to be different.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Actually, they are going to be different, and they are, they are aligned. So, they grow with the age of the students, so to speak. So, at the elementary level, dragon virtual students will be assigned one teacher like they are currently, and then obviously, they'll have their specials teacher. And that schedule will run very similarly to what we're doing remotely now. For the middle school, the student will keep their same schedule for core classes, and the student will have the option of attending a live mini-session each day during their scheduled core time. They don't have to, because the session will be recorded, but if a student wants a more structured day with more teacher interaction, they can have that for every one of their core content classes. Then for their elective classes, those are totally asynchronous and will be done independently with a Lake Orion mentor teacher who will make sure that they're keeping up with the edgenuity curriculum in class.
Okay, so for the core classes in middle school, those live classes are those with the in-school classroom teachers?
That's correct. So, the, the, the middle school teacher will have an hour in their day, or a section, as we call it, that will be for their virtual students. So, they won't have any in-person students for that section or that hour of the day, that class period. They'll have virtual students.
As opposed to viewing what was happening in school with the in-school students? That's not going to happen.
No.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, good, good questions. Then for the high school, it's all asynchronous. So, the time with a teacher will be through office hours. Teachers will have one hour a week that will be set and designated. All other appointments will be arranged through the student and the teacher. So, that's very important to note. That is a true virtual program. And so, that's how it will work at the high school. All of the classes will be through edgenuity. However, we've already are aligning those classes with our curriculum, so that if a dragon virtual student wants to come back in person, there's no problem with that. It's already.
There'll be complete alignment.
Yes.
Great.
Our teachers are doing that alignment. And then it would be, they would have, high school students would have a, our own high school mentor teacher, who again, you know, can answer their question, checks in on them, make sure that they are progressing through the edgenuity curriculum.
Great. Thank you. I think that's key information.
That will all be coming.
Families.
Yes, that will all be coming out in the next couple of days. And I also encourage people to tune in. We are having an elementary meeting that will take place for dragon virtual on Monday, the 28th at 7:00, I believe. And then on the 29th, middle school will be at 6:00. And then the high school will be at 7:30. And again, all of this, this information will be sent to families. But, and if there's, for some reason, that a family cannot attend the meeting virtually, again, that will be recorded, and they'll be able to watch that.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, yes, Scott?
Thanks, Jim. I just wanted to go back to, thanks for that explanation, Heidi. I think it was better in another voice, but that's, I'm just kidding, Ben. It's, this is more feedback, I guess. So, in my mind, personally, I originally was going to keep my high school daughter home and go virtually. But when I see that we're going to do half the kids in the high school, and the way that that's going to be set up, I feel much more confident about it. So, I guess where my confidence starts to waver a bit is if we come to a point that all of a sudden, we bring all the kids back, and we've got 2,500 kids there, I don't necessarily feel as good about it, but I don't have an option to go virtual at that point. Is that correct?
No.
Just the way it's set up right now?
Because this, again, the staffing, we'd have to redo all of the staffing. That, that is the whole key to this that makes it very, very difficult.
Sure. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood.
Okay, thank you. All right, just to close things out, Ben, any last thoughts before we close this discussion out?
A comment, just that this all will come together with the cooperation of our, of our staff, who's highly dedicated to our students and making this work, and our community working together with us, and, and certainly the board working, you know, with Cabinet to make this move forward. So, it's a, it is like starting in the school year. You know, like Berg had, had mentioned, I mentioned before, it is like starting up a school year when we make this transition, and, and we are doing the best we can, and we'll be moving forward and looking forward to providing great programs for our kids.
Great. Thank you very much. It's a, it's a very well-thought-out plan with a great plan for execution. And I think that the community will appreciate all the work that's gone into it by so many people. So, thank you very much for that. We're going to move along to the policy committee report, and I think that's brief, isn't it, Jake? We just have some work to do tonight. Approval?
Yeah, we'll be approving the items that we talked about last time, which are the Title, Title IX required changes and the removal of the former sexual violence policy.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll go on to the Oakland County School Board Association update. Berg?
Thank you, Jim. This past week, we, we could go already held a, our dinner meeting. We managed to hold it outside under a big tent, and it was, it was nice to see people in person. We were socially distanced and masked and all that, and he wasn't there to, able to get his award. But Steve was honored by Oakland County School Board Association and recognition of 16 years of service award. I have it here with me.
Thank you.
It's unique. What Steve has is, it's actually this month, Steve marks 10 years of, since you were first appointed on the board here in Lake Orion. But he also has six years prior with the district up north. So, he's got a combined service of 16 years. And we thank you for your dedication, Steve. So, I have that for you, and I'll, I'll get that dropped off to you.
I thank you, Berg, and I thank every school board member. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you. Thank you.
I have one more thing to bring up on behalf of OCSBA, and I wanted to let everyone know that we typically have meetings as our board on second and fourth Wednesdays of every month. November is a little unique, and we had rearranged our schedule, and they happened to fall on, I believe it's on the first and third Wednesdays because of, or maybe it's the first and fourth, but Thanksgiving got in there, and it's a little different. The OCSBA hosts meetings on the third Wednesdays, and we have a conflicting board meeting that night. And it's a dilemma for anybody who wants to go through. For me, it's particularly a dilemma, because I'm on that board of directors. It's a, that night, we will be hosting Dr. J. Marks, and he's going to be speaking on diversity, equity and inclusion, which would be a, a really good thing for, for interested board members to be able to attend. So, I wanted to put that out there. Jim had suggested I, I bring that up in a board meeting, and I just wanted to see what we thought about our schedule in November, and do we need to, and do we need them spread out in that month, through the month, in that manner?
Your thoughts? Well, let's put it out this way. Would you be willing to flex on our schedule to accommodate this meeting?
Yes.
Question?
Yeah.
That's a good way to ask it, and yes, we would. I would.
Okay. All right, so I'll get with Julie. We'll look at the schedule. I'll talk with Ben. We'll figure out how we can adjust the schedule slightly, so it meets our needs here, which still come first. And then if we're able to accommodate that, we'll, we'll juggle the dates around, so people can attend as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that greatly.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to student achievement, and Heidi?
Okay, first this evening, you know that anything that goes through the Head Start has to go through the board. And so, in your packets this evening, there is a request to approve the budget with a waiver that we're allowed to request a waiver for 20% of the non-federal funds based on COVID this year. There is written policy that says based on emergency or disaster. Obviously, in this case, it is COVID. And so, our Lake Orion Head Start will be applying for that. The other thing that I wanted to share, and I'm going to attempt to share screen here, is testing that is coming up by the college board. Do you, well, this is actually a virtual writing lab. Do you see that?
No, I don't see it, Heidi.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, let's see. Sorry. Yeah, I did that. Well, this is one of them. Okay, well, now this is, I'll stay here for a second, I have several screen shares. Okay, can you see this one? The writing virtual lab, okay, well, we're gonna change up the, the order here that I have. I just wanted to put out that we do have our instructional coaches that are coming up with some great opportunities for students. This one just is going out, this is a virtual writing lab for students grade six through 12. So here, they can sign up for an appointment, any of our high school or middle school students, that they can get help, any grade, any class, or any assignment, so I thought this was a great idea by the instructional coaches, and a great opportunity for our students to be able to reach out for support on any of their assignments, additional support. Alright, now. Okay, hold on, I'm gonna attempt to share something else. Yeah, I gotta go back to my email. I dropped it down, but it didn't work. No, it's in my inbox. Okay, got it. Okay, can you see that?
No. Open up the Zoom window again. I have to share.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Alright, I apologize, it was open, I don't know where it went. Okay, so we have some testing coming up that was not able to be complete in spring. This is our PSAT for our students in grades eight, nine, and 10. So just so you know, this will be taking place in person on October 29th. There are safety protocols being put in place. This communication will be, if it not, has not already reached parents. This is optional for students, however, the district is encouraging our students to participate in this, because again, this is practice for the SAT, it is also information that we use as a staff. You'll also see that in the spring, we again, attempt, or we will attempt, or College Board is planning, I should say, to give the spring assessment, and that date will be given in April, we don't have an exact date, but we do know that those tests will occur in April. So again, these dates have all been set by the College Board, and this communication will be going out, we also have information regarding the SAT, which again, will be for seniors, because they did not have this opportunity last year, and that date will be coming up on October 14th, and again, this communication is going out to parents as well, so just so you're aware, we're getting in all of the tests that could not take place in the spring, but yet, these are very, very important tests, so this information will be going out to families for students. Nope, I'm all good. And then the other thing that I wanted to share with you this evening is that we are tracking our student attendance for remote learning, and so we are very pleased to this point with our attendance across the board. On any given day, it ranges from high 80s to high 90s percent. So again, that is extremely something to be proud of, and that's, that is awesome attendance, so we thank our teachers and our families for the collaboration, we know that this has been difficult for many families, but as by our attendance, we are seeing that it is a priority, and families are, are making sure that their students are logging on and participating, so we do thank everybody's efforts in that, so.
That's great, it speaks volumes about both our parents and our staff.
It sure does.
Make that happen for, for the kids who really need that support at both ends, so thank you for that. Alright, we'll move on, can you give us a bond report, please?
Yes, the design committees, we did not have design committees today, however, we did have a project management bond meeting, and construction is still coming along, one of the areas that I pointed out is that Orient Oaks Office, we are on schedule for that, but that schedule is in November, and then Carpenter, their new office and their classroom, their additional classroom and offices, those will be done at the end of September, so we're getting very, very close.
Great, alright, thank you. We'll move on, Curriculum Committee, I don't believe we have anything this evening?
There's nothing new to update from last week, where we are approving the, the minutes from that meeting.
Correct. And Lamp of Learning, did, Julie, did you wanna jump in on this?
I didn't know if one of the, the board members was planning to give the update, I can do it if you prefer.
Oh, well.
Go ahead, Julie.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, we've got over 2,000 kids that are eligible for awards from last school year, and of course, our dilemma is trying to determine a distribution method, and, you know, how to hand those out to them without having a traditional ceremony. We bounced a couple of ideas past our secondary principals, and the committee met last week to discuss those, mailing is not an option. The cost is just exponential, I went and got a quote from the post office, and it was much higher than I anticipated, so with a little more brainstorming, I think we're looking at trying to plan like a curbside pickup. So I am waiting for a couple of the awards to still come in from the order that was placed over the summer. I do expect them early October, so I'll be sending out a poll to all of you to check availability for probably the second or third week in October to plan a block of time where we would have all middle school and high school students that earned an award to, to drop by and pick them up.
Great, alright, thank you for that, thanks for your work on that, too.
Can I add something to that?
Please.
Um, with, in that discussion, and Scott jumped in too, if I don't talk it up enough, we were trying to be excited and not take something away from the students, there's been so much change, and we wanted to deliver it somehow in person, and we've basically volunteered all of our board to stand outside, whatever the weather may be, and hopefully we'll have a tent or some way to do it, I know I've witnessed our own staff and administration distribute many different things, Heidi and her staff, between technology and curriculum things that you've handed out, there's been an amazing loop that goes around from going up scripts, they did through Circ, through Circ over there and then out, so it's a nice loop cutting through the horseshoe, and we just wanted to really honor our students and their academic awards and not lose that this year.
That's great.
We were not taking no for an answer.
Yeah, you're all invited to.
So we very well may be out there in snowmobile suits and boots, and it might just be Burgett, Mary Jo, and I, but we're gonna be there.
Better not just be.
Everybody will be there, come on. Alright.
It'll be fun.
If it is only Burgett, Scott, and I, there will be some serious shaming at the next board meeting.
Alright, thank you for putting that plan together, that's what we need to do, it sounds like a great idea. Alright, so we're gonna move to Human Resources, and Rick?
Yes, good evening. Obviously, we had a an approval at the last board meeting, but I understand we're going to redo those for this particular meeting. Would your pleasure be for me to read each of those names again, or I guess I'll defer to you?
Did, did we, were there four last time, or three? We, we.
We, oh yeah, we have the addition of Heather Weber, that's correct.
Okay, why don't you read them again, Rick?
Okay, we can, we'll do it again, and I'll give you a short highlight. Mary Jo Dunn, she'll, she'll be teaching Spanish for us at the high school, she just completed her student teaching last year, to use Burgett's terms from earlier, from the district to the north, and Teresa Floyd, she will be one of our speech pathologists, she finished up her clinicals through the district to the south of us. Jennifer Schellenkirk, she will be teaching science at Oakview, she comes to us with some experience from Lamphier Public Schools, and then the most recent addition is Heather Weber, she'll be teaching elementary music, and she comes to us with several years of experience from the Dearborn Public Schools.
Great, and the, and the reason we're reading these again, and we're also taking action on them, was due to the little technology issue at our last meeting, we wanted to do this in a live meeting, so with it, with a live broadcast, I should say, so, thank you, Rick?
Can I just say how cool it is to have a music teacher at Weber with the last name of Weber?
I like it, I like it. Alright, so we'll move on to tenure recipients, and Rick, do you wanna go take us through that, please?
Yes, this has been long coming, we typically would have done this a lot earlier, towards the end of the school year last year, and we do a big recognition of them at the opening day, staff, welcome, so we did a little bit of that virtually this year, but each year, we do recognize them formally at a staff meeting for attaining the status of tenure, and I'll read those for you quickly, and
Please.
we'd like to congratulate them, we have Christopher Klebek, he is at Walden Middle School, Stacy Feeny, Lake Orion High School, Megan Kiefer, Stadium Drive Elementary, Melissa Kilgore from Carpenter Elementary, Hallie Kokatovich from Lake Orion High School, Lauren Lawrence is at Carpenter, Melissa Ostertag from Circ, Emily Robinson, Scripps Middle School, and Sharon Spencer from Lake Orion High School. Again, a great accomplishment on their part.
Congratulations. Fantastic. And as an old, old teacher, getting tenure back in the day was nothing like it is today, it's, it's a commitment and it's work, and people have to meet a lot of standards to reach this level, and so it's, it truly is an achievement, and congratulations to all of those teachers. We'll move on to Business and Finance, and John, your update?
Your board packet is the August Board Financial Report, we give you a quick, a couple of quick highlights. So through the end of August, we've recognized revenue of $6,429,206. It's about a little over 8% of the budget. On the expenditure side, we've recognized $3,768,507, and that's a little under 5% of the expenditure budget, and just a case in point, this is the only time, hopefully, you'll ever see that kind of flip, usually, it's the other way around, where the revenues are trailing the expenses. The reason for this predominantly is that in July, we got an advancement on our P8 team funding to build our cash position up from the county, as well as the cares of CRF R money coming on, coming into the, the district in July, so and we recognizing both of those pieces of revenue, so leading right into our cash position, so as of the end of August, a little over ma- $11 million. Again, that's from the cares, the unusually high amount is from the result of the cares and the advancement of P8 team funding, and we're expecting based upon this level, something a little under 8 million in terms of our cash position at the end of June, that's based on current structure and current budget planning today. So with that thought, knowing where the, the state is on the verge of passing, finally passing a school aid budget for this year, I thought I'd give a quick blurb, it's not on the agenda, but I'll give you a quick update in terms of
Yes, please.
what's going on state-wise and how that feeds into our amendment cycle, so the pieces that are in the school aid budget that will be passing are major pieces from the revenue budget side, which were the, some of the, two of the biggest sections were, again, what's gonna happen with the foundation allowance per students, and the other categorical pieces, the, the actual foundation allowance is gonna be held flat to what, what it was at the beginning of last year, so that's for our districts, it's $8,529 per student. And then in terms of the funding formula, the overall formula is a new hybrid blend specific to this year, where in effect, we are counting the mathematical formula that feeds the number of students that will be funded for this year, will be 75% of the final count, weighted count last year, and 25% of this year's actual weighted count. To the extent that it's going to be impacting the budget, now that we have the actual other pieces of the state budget coming out clearly, that's gonna make the development and consolidation of the revenue budget much, much easier, and much more coming down the pipeline. The other, on the expenditure budget side of things, as we move into final preparations and actual opera, opera, operation, I cannot speak tonight, I apologize, as we actually make our return to school plan real, and we can, we'll be identifying who's where, what's on staff where, what's, you know, how the cost structure is gonna fall out, that's gonna inform and feed the amendment surrounding the expenditure budget, so, so from a timeline point of view, we have on schedule currently a planned amendment for the first one for this year to first reading occurring on December 2nd, so working backwards, actually working from this moment forward, we've got most of the revenues identified, so that'll be the first piece that'll be finalized here, and as we move through the balance of September and into October, we'll have the expenditure structure better clarified, better identified, and that will feed the expenditure side of it, once that's compiled from a, a tracking identification point of view, we're gonna go in and update our financial systems, which then feeds our documentation development process, and once those documents are put together, then it feeds to the cabinet review and the finance subcommittee review, ultimately ending in the December 2nd first meeting for the Board of Education. If nothing else, this is going to be very, from the financial perspective, a very interesting process between now and December 2nd. There's a lot of math going on, a lot of estimates, a lot of things like that coming into play, definitely not a normal year. I can say with great certainty with what is going to come forward December 2nd, it will be in the ballpark, and then of course, we'll have another amendment scheduled for later in the year, which will put it right on the landing ground, our landing strip in terms of where it needs to be, and from a perspective of knowing what we're, what we're gonna have, and what our costs will be. I wouldn't say we're gonna be in a balanced situation or a small surplus, I wanna say that, I can't say that right now without any certainty, so this whole year, again, is just gonna be, it's the old saying of building the plane while you're flying it, while at the same time, you know, answering the question, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? So it's gonna be one of those years that hopefully, from my career point of view, I will never experience again, but we will get through it in one way or another, we'll get, we'll get some updates and processes forward on the, on the financial reporting piece.
Sounds good.
I'd be happy to ask, to answer any questions.
Questions for John, yes, Jake?
Thanks for the explanation on how December 2nd is gonna come together. When do you expect to have a final tally of how the school year, the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2020? We were expecting a big proration when we adopted that final budget. When is all that dust gonna settle, and we could expect to see a report?
We're actually from an audit perspective, we've got draft information in place now, we've got a, we'll have a the finance subcommittee meeting coming up, I gotta double-check the date on that, and I'll, I'll report back out and remind on that. Where, that's the subcommittee meeting where we review the draft documents and some of the presentation work, and typically, this, men would be sitting in with that, that process, but in terms of a quick overview, which I apologize for, I should have brought forward earlier, in terms of what occurred last year, the proration ended up being about half of, a little less than half of what the math implied as we rounded into last year. The way that landed is that this, the legislature, the governor ended up using a lot of stabilization funding and the CARES Act funding to backfill. stabilization funding and the CARES Act funding to backfill, to minimize impact. So from a per pupil reduction point of view, we landed in a neighborhood of a $175 per pupil cut. It was taken out through a categorical approach, as opposed to actually reducing our foundation allowance amount. Do you remember back in 2012, I want to say, they actually reduced the foundation? So the effect that this has, this has for the year we're coming into is they're fully funding back to the, the foundational allowance amount that we had at the beginning of last year. So that's a good thing. So we're not going to lose ground on where we're at in that regard. So in terms of an estimate, I can compile and put out an informational in terms of where we're at from a draft perspective. Some of the delay was involved with how to recognize some of the money that was coming in from the state, pass through from the federal government. So in terms of fund balance, we're going to be in an operating deficit of about $1 million for the end of fiscal '20, which is not good in and of itself, but far better than what it could have been. If you recall, we were, the math of what was going on, based upon what was known back in March and April, was a neighborhood of a $600 per student loss. So the, the decks on the Titanic, so to speak, had been, has been successfully shifted around. And this year that we're coming into, there's actually an excess amount going to be rolled forward from last year to help support with this year. The real concern will be next year, when there's no more, you know, one-time money coming in from the federal government, anything like that. Unless, of course, there's more federal funding coming through. So I'll get something more detailed out in terms of draft, and then we'll have our actual, I believe it's the, I want to say it's the October, end of October meeting, we're looking at doing the board presentation.
Great. Okay, thank you. Other questions for John?
I do have one more item on the agenda.
John, before you go ahead with that, I want, I did have a question about with the infusion of some funds being, and having them being front-loaded. Will that assist us in preventing the need to borrow to meet payroll?
Absolutely. If we, if we had not, between the cares and the advancement of the P-18 money, we're showing a little over $11 million in the cash balance, it would have been about $5 million.
Right.
And based upon timing of payrolls coming up, we've probably been drawing on our line of credit. So at this point, it doesn't look like we need to draw on the line of credit, and I shouldn't say that out loud, because something will change in a month, and maybe my words, but the goal is to avoid that. If you remember, that was brought online as an insurance policy, so to speak.
Sure.
But so far, so good in that regard.
Great, thank you. All right, you had something else, sir?
Yeah, the other item that's titled "Legal Agents of Record Update", what's that really, what that really addresses that through the board process, I want to say it's a January meeting where we do the identification of our district agents of record. I could be wrong, it might be the end of June one, it's one of those two meetings. One of our prior identified legal councils, Luskin Albertson, they have merged or actually were acquired by another. So now their formal name has become Miller Johnson, PLC. So in terms of editing or updating the record, that's what this represents.
Great, all right, thank you. All right, so we will move ahead. Finance Committee Report, there's no Finance Committee, right, Jake? I would have been absent if there was, right? Facilities Liaison Report, Scott?
There's no report, but John, I'd like to get one on the schedule, so we can kind of go over the, the plan for the next month. I'm sure the board's interested in that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approve payment of the August bills in the amount of $14,626,552.97. Approve minutes from the August 26, 2020 regular meeting to September 2, 2020 curriculum committee meeting, and the September 15, 2020 special and workshop meetings. Also approving the Head Start Coordinator's Report.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Scott. Julie, please.
Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
Your Weedman?
Yes. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. May I have a motion to approve the policy revisions, and as I mentioned previously, this is a carryover from our last meeting that did not stream live immediately, so we're, we're redoing it this evening.
Yes, I would move to approve the policy revisions, as presented.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. So our policy revisions are approved. May I have a motion to approve the certified new hires?
I move that we approve the four certified new hires, as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
The Weedman?
Yes. So our certified new hires are approved, and we want to welcome them once again to our team. Welcome. I'm glad you're here. May I have a motion to authorize bid award for electronic signage?
I move that we authorize administration to execute a contract with Curb Appeal Concepts Incorporated for monument signs at 10 school buildings in the amount of $239,795 with a contingency of $23,980 for a total project allocation of $263,775, as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. And I, before we vote, I want to remind the board that this is one that we carried over from the last meeting as well. All right, Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
Your Weedman?
Yes. The bid award for electronic signage is approved. May I have a motion to approve the extended COVID-19 learning plan?
I move that we approve the Lake Orion Community Schools' Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan in compliance with Public Act 149, Section 98A, as presented.
Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan is approved. Moving on, may I have a motion to authorize return to, to learn plan update?
I move to authorize administration to implement the 2020-2021 Return to School Plan Update, as presented.
And is there support?
There is support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The Return to Learn Plan Update is approved. May I have a motion to approve the Head Start Grant?
I move that we approve the Head Start, Early Head Start Continuation Grant Application for the 2021 fiscal year, as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Drakos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Your Taylor?
Yes.
Your Weedman?
Yes. The Head Start Grant is approved. May I have a motion to authorize updated legal agents of record?
I move that we authorize establishing the following law firms to represent the school district. Clark Hill Attorneys at Law, Collins and Blaha, PC. Miller Canfield, PLC. Miller Johnson, PLC. And Seacrest Wardle, the Adaircase.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burchar?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Your singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Your Weedman?
Yes. The authorization to update legal agents of record is approved. So we'll move on to recap and next steps. And Ben?
All right, so as far as some follow-up, identified the high school support time, whether or not students will be there for that. Rick answered that, I believe, after that was asked. But if anything changes with that, we'll be sure to update the board. Also, we'll provide some clarity on the breakfast offering at the high school. And we'll continue to do the monthly updates regarding the return to school plan. And also, we'll give an update on the status of the O-Tech program and whether or not there's some in-person options, if their offerings have changed at all. And then lastly, we'll be looking at the consideration of a change of the November board meeting date.
Great, all right. That being said, the closing comments, and John?
Just welcome to our new hires, and congratulations to the, those who have newly achieved the tenure.
Thank you. Rick?
I will echo John's comments there, but I do want to thank a number of people for all of the work that's taken place this last month. And if I forget anybody, I do apologize. But from our Ask Me group with pulling off the transportation for our special needs students, you would not believe the intricacies of the number of routes and so forth that's taking place. And those people have been fantastic. I've spent a lot of time over transportation. They're all in very good spirits. Food service, the same thing, with making all the adjustments that we've made in the last few weeks. B&amp;G has stepped up. Our secretarial groups, we've had some changes take place. They've been back in business with us here and now for the better part of a month. They're riding along really well, and we appreciate that. The LOEA, Ben alluded to earlier. Heidi and I have spent more time with that group of leadership and some of our building administrators, working through the details of this return to school plan. We couldn't do it without them, and we really appreciate the collaborative work that we can do here in this district with our unions. And, and lastly, all of our at-will, especially our people in this building. You may not know, or haven't noticed, or some of you have, most of this building's been back functioning in person, full-time, five days a week, for the better part of the last couple of months. And some of us have been here the last three or four months. So this, this building, they need to be recognized as well. We've been here each and every day plugging away. So it's been a great effort by the entire district to get us to where we're at. And, and I can't thank our employees enough. We're fortunate to be where we're at as an employer, and I hate to use that term, but we are. And we're an employer, and we've got great employees. And, and I couldn't ask for, for a better position to be in, in the field of HR than to have the collaborative efforts that we have right now.
Great, thank you very much, Rick. Thank you for your work. Heidi?
All right, well, congratulations to the new hires and welcome. Also, congratulations to the people who received tenure. And I do agree with Rick and all that he has stated regarding everyone in the district who has truly pulled together time and time again regarding the plan and, you know, Plan A, B, C, D, whatever it may be on any given day. But the collaboration across the district with all of the, all of the groups has just been amazing. And really, that is what makes Lake Orion a great place to be. So I too want to thank everybody.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your work, Heidi. Ben?
Yeah, this work that we're all accomplishing, it was very complex work, and, you know, to provide the additional and the new options. And we're moving in the right direction as a community with COVID. And I really look forward to taking the future steps that we're planning for. I can't say enough thank, thanks to the building administrators, our teachers, support staff for all the instructional delivery and the remote work, while we're planning and preparing all of these future changes. And certainly to the parents for their, their feedback, their flexibility and understanding as we continue to plan for this continuous education. And certainly the Board of Ed for all of your conversations and feedback. And we've received so many, you know, educated questions or great questions, and it helps us move forward. And I can't reiterate the words of all of the cabinet members. You know, they're doing significant work with very, very important, you know, members of our, of our team. And we're accomplishing great things, and we'll continue to do that, but can't emphasize, you know, the great commitment that everybody has had. And I'm very thankful to be on this team.
Thank you, Ben. And thank you for all your good work. Nate?
Congrats to the new hires and tenure. Thank you for the impressive plans. Looking forward to keepin', moving forward.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Jim. Congratulations to the new hires. You have a lot of good people to work with. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Steve. Bergen?
Oh, I concur with all the sentiments on welcoming our new hires and congratulating those who achieve tenure. And I appreciate the, the detailed shout-out that Rick gave to all the efforts that have been made by our incredible staff to pouring into the work. I know that it, it's hard for people on the outside often to see what, what's involved and the minutia of how all the gears turn and what's involved. But, and I, and, and having said that, parents have, have poured in too, and the students. It's been a challenge for everyone, but I am so impressed with our staff all around and what they've done. I am very appreciative of that. And having said that, my heart aches with the many losses that have been experienced in our school district this past year or two. Tonight, I don't want to let our high school staff know how sorry I am for the loss of Rick Messick. He's an amazing teacher, and I know your heart's hurt. He will be missed. I'm heartbroken. He lost his battle with cancer. I grieve with you.
Thank you, Bergen. And we all grieve with the community and family. Thank you for bringing that forward. Mary Jo?
Thanks, Jim. I would also like to congratulate the newly tenured teachers. As Jim mentioned, it's a lot of work to do that, and so we want you to know that we understand all the work that went into that. Welcome to the new staff. Condolences to the Messick family as well. And again, shouting out to the, the staff and the cabinet who all worked so closely together to put this return to school plan into place. The one piece that I can take from this and, and thank you the most for is that you did not do this expediently. You did it correctly. You did it with quality, and I appreciate that. And I think, parents, I know that means another month. But, you know, keep your eye on the prize. This will be done well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Jake?
Yeah, congratulations to the new hires and to those who, who had tenure. My condolences also to the Messick family. And just thank you, everybody. I'll use the term "the Dragon Family", that everybody has gone through this, and we're on this path together, and we're making progress. And everybody sticking with us and, and working together has made, makes this easier, and it makes it better for what we'll get in the end.
Thank you, Jake. Scott?
Condolences to the Messick family. I think everybody said it. I don't, I don't need to say it again. So I just, I'm very happy with the plan. I think it's very impressive that when you look at it, it's actually three plans. So it's not that we just, you know, breaking out levels, and there's, there's completely different things going on at each one. So it's not that we just, you know, breaking out levels and there's, there's completely different things going on at each one. And thinking about the safety of our children and our families and our staff. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I just would like to say that great teams are comprised of great role players and every role has a value in this mix. Every role is critical to the success and those roles go beyond the walls of the school, to all of the services, onto the parents and, and to the students. And so when we're all fulfilling our roles, we can't help but be successful. And I, I just want to extend my thanks to everybody who's been involved in this step-by-step process. It's not been easy. It's not going to be easy. But we've always been able to do it like Oregon will do it on this one, too. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.